G stakehouse.
A piece of real estate that's worth a lot of money.
Starbucks.
That's Starbucks there. And, uh, I don't know.
Cigar place.
They just couldn't swing the down payment. They just couldn't make the numbers work, so.
I was trying to figure out.
Like Anveri owns that.
He's getting kicked out or?
Pleasure to be in the studio playing on the United States of America. Intolerate, public, for licchishands, one nation, under God, indivisible, who deliver tamed justice for all.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for coming. Um, roll call. I guess we have all here present that we have. Any changes, addition or deletions to agenda?
No, sir, not for tonight.
Move for approval of the agenda?
We got a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all present. Item number four, conditional use permit for Schulte Transmission four oh eight, Third Street North.
Yeah, you can go ahead and open the public hearing, then we'll go through the report.
Notice of public hearing, Way Park Planning Commission will hold a meeting at City Hall nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, six thirty or soon thereafter Tuesday, December twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, to hear the following requests. Request of Schulte Transmission for a conditional use permit to operate a major automotive repair business in a B two commercial general business district. Property is legally described as lots one through five, town site of Way Park. Way Park Sterns, Minnesota, four oh eight, Third Street North. Public hearing opened at six thirty two.
Uh, just a quick note before I launch into the report here. Just wanted to thank everybody, uh, attendees and Plan, Plan Commission members for the flexibility. We, first time in almost eight years we've postponed due to weather since I've been here. We probably could have chugged through, but the kind of unknown of ice and stuff, uh, made me a little reticent, especially when we had people coming from a long ways potentially. So appreciate that flexibility. So we'll go ahead with tonight. Again, this first item is a request of Schulte Transmission for a conditional use permit to operate major automotive repair at four oh eight, Third Street North. Uh, this is a B two commercial then general business district, well known as Paganski Auto, uh, which was approved some number of years ago, um, for a conditional use permit for the same sort of use. Paganski Auto, the current owner has given their approval to pursue the, the request for Schulte Transmission. If the request would ultimately be approved, uh, Schulte Transmission would, and would continue moving forward with a purchase and relocation, uh, to this property from their current location at eighteen Second Avenue North. Kind of tucked away behind Great Harvest Bread Company. Uh, this request, I know it's a little bit odd, um, in that they're, they're very like uses, but there's a little bit of history here. Um, this request requires a conditional use permit for two reasons. First, the work that Schulte Transmission performs, uh, with the transmission is, um, considered major automotive work by ordinance, which requires a conditional use permit in that area. Um, secondly, uh, Paganski Auto had a similar approval for conditional use, which had been previously granted, but was revoked, uh, I believe in, excuse me, um, twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, uh, revoked by the city due to repeated nuisance issue, issues throughout the property, although, although they were authorized to continue with auto work, considered minor per ordinance. That's basically where you're not, uh, pulling out drive train and, and getting really into the vehicle more, um, oil changes and very light work. The applicant, uh, Schulte Transmission has noted that they have four full-time and two part-time employees with no plans to change that, uh, with relocation. They would utilize the existing business as a, basically a turnkey operation, utilizing the existing facilities and service base and, uh, very similar tools and equipment, uh, currently in use for Paganski Auto. There's, uh, I believe there's lifts in place, so it's, it's pretty much ready to go. The applicant submitted a, uh, a site sketch, which was attached, just noting some, some general improvements that they would plan for the property, including some sections of new payment, uh, new and additional fenced areas and a new dumpster enclosure. I know, I think we're all aware that, uh, the Paganski Auto is in, uh, kind of, uh, a little bit rough shape at these, at this point, with the dumpster enclosure has been falling apart and fencing has deteriorated and, um, you know, it's, it's kind of something we're continually chasing after for the, for the city on, um, you know, numerous vehicles that are parked where they're not supposed to be. It's kind of an ongoing nuisance thing for the city. Uh, sometimes it gets better, uh, then sometimes it gets worse, so we have to, uh, contact them again. I would note that if, if, uh, Schulte Transmission or, uh, the current owner for that, for that, uh, matter, did fully fenced or screened areas, uh, with, to meet the city approval, those could be utilized for some limited outdoor storage areas, provided that they don't become nuisance conditions and let junk accumulate or inoperable or unlicensed vehicles, stuff that's either too, too broken down or not roadworthy. You know, if it's missing windshields, if it's been crashed up, it's, that's not something we want on Third Street front and center. It's gotta be, you know, inside or, or tucked away somewhere. It can't be. I, I would add that Schulte Transit, Schulte Transmission, we've never had an issue with, with their property. They've been a, a good steward of their, their current location, uh, good business for Way Park and, I think this would be a, a potentially beneficial, uh, move for them and, uh, probably be a, a good fit for that, for that property. I'm, uh, generally supportive of the request and have, uh, made a couple of recommended, recommended conditions of approval and intended to help ensure that proposal blends with the, uh, adjacent property. So, so my recommendation would be approval with the following conditions. I've got, uh, a number here. I don't think they're, they're, uh, out of line with what, you know, we'd be looking at. Uh, number one, a parking plan shall be submitted for review approval of Planning and Community Development Director. Parking plan shall include striping of parking stalls and shall be configured in such manner that every vehicle parked must have direct in, direct out access without being blocked by another vehicle and should follow the same design as a typical commercial parking lot. Upon approval by Planning, Planning and Community Development Director, the parking plan shall be implemented and adhered to accordingly. Number two, vehicles on site shall not exceed the number of available parking stalls as approved per parking plan. Number three, new fencing requires review and building permit prior to installation. Number four, hours of operation are limited to seven AM through six PM daily. Number five, no unlicensed vehicles. Uh, on, or vehicles in an inoperable or junk condition shall be located on the property unless within a hard surface and fully screened area as approved by Planning and, and Community Development Director. Number six, no junk materials or scrap parts shall be stored outside or otherwise allowed to accumulate upon the property. Any such items found to be on site shall be removed and disposed of immediately upon request of city staff. Number seven, uh, any new exterior signage, including ground and wall signs, shall require, uh, require a permit prior to installation and, or fabrication of signage to provide for review and approval. Lastly, number eight, uh, utilization of building or portions thereof shall be subject to review and approval as per, uh, City of Way Park Building Official. All exterior and interior work shall be subject to necessary building, plumbing, electrical and other permits as deemed required by city staff. Um, basically my intent with, with that was, um, you know, part of the issue we have with the property currently and it, it ebbs and flows a little bit, but, um, when they have too many vehicles that accumulate and they start blocking each other, it becomes kind of a large-scale Tetris game. Essentially, the, the parking lot becomes overrun with vehicles because they're not being turned over quick enough. They're not, you know, they come in for repair, but they never get repaired or there's waiting on payment or they're waiting on a part or there's a story with everyone that's, that's there. And I know, and speaking with Mr. Schulte, that was part of my concern is that, you know, we don't want that for a property. It's fine if there's some cars, but they shouldn't exceed the number of spaces that are available. But I, I, I'm confident that, you know, he, he runs good business and, you know, I think he, his method of doing business is a little bit different perhaps than, than the current owner and, um, you know, trying to move vehicles through, get them done, get them out, get them paid for and get another one in and, uh, keep the business working. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with this application and I think it would be a, a, a good, good conversion for that property and, uh, could, would then, uh, open up, I believe. I can't, I, I, I don't know if I asked this Mr., Mr. Schulte, but, um, was your intent then to retain that, your existing building or put that up for sale or lease?
That, that is a leased building right now.
Okay.
Actually, uh.
If you want to come up to the mic, Jim, that would be.
What's that?
If you could come up to the mic.
For sure.
No, the building I'm in right now is a leased building. So our lease does expire at the end of September. Our plan would be to try to take possession of Poganski in June first, leaving me time for cleanup at Poganski's and transition smoothly with no interruption of work. I just don't like seeing the, you know, all of us down, no income coming in and lots of income going out the door. So we thought that'd be the best way where we can be flawless, seamless from one day working here to the next day, basically ready to work over at Poganski's and, and continue jobs.
Makes sense.
We, yeah, we do not let vehicles sit around like the current tenant there. Like I say, we, I gotta turn them, I gotta, you know, we got bills to pay and families to run and we, we got six guys there and stuff gets done, stuff's cleaned up. There's no snowbank sitting in, you know, if you drive by there right now, there must be fifteen cars that haven't even brushed off since it snowed the first time. It's like, come on, damn. Just little stuff that, you know, we'll clean up Third Street and, uh, give it a good appeal as it goes by and.
Does the, does the plan for the new property, does the parking seem to be adequate for what you, compared to what you have now?
It does. I sort of, I did go and look at the, the property the way it is right now. It is harder with the amount of cars that he's got sitting around to try to get a good visual at it. But mainly that front row would be our customer parking, uh, along fronts, along Third Street there. The few side parkings would be our employee daily leave parking is what we sort of envisioned. Making the dumpster enclosure come out from the front of the building along the three overhead doors and I just extend that building with, uh, you know, either, uh, eight or a ten-foot wall with opening doors and we'd pull the dumpster out and they'd remove it that night and in the morning I'd report and close the doors again. Something a little more matching to the building than what's, you know, out in the corner of the sitting there now. That would look a little nicer and just clean everything up again a little bit more.
John, is he operating under a conditional use permit now, I assume?
I don't believe you are now. I think it's been, the business has been there long enough. There's nothing on record. That's what, that's why the, the whole, the whole arrangement here is a little bit unique in that, um, and they're also in the same zoning district. That's, that's what the core, because it's been there long enough that, um, for some reason or another, doesn't have a, a record of, of any sort of conditional use permit. It's never been a problem. They, they run a tight ship. But just for, for comfort's sake for everybody and, you know, to be sure we're adhering to the ordinance as it is now, the preference was to, okay, let's do it right. Let's get a conditional use permit in place and, you know, reasonable conditions. I know, uh, some of the conditions that were set in place with, with the current user, you know, limited it to, to, um, it said vehicles can't be on-site longer than ten days. Well, that's, you know, it's well-intended, but it becomes very, very difficult to monitor because unless you're literally going out and taking inventory every ten days. And if there's, you know, if, if they have a parking plan in place and, and striping, as long as there's no more vehicles, if everybody can get in and get out, it, it's no different than pesties across the street, you know, functionally. It's just when they get, it gets over full and then vehicles sit for months on end, that's when it becomes a problem.
Yeah, there seems to be a lot of them parked at forty fives and at thirty-degree angles and just jabbed in over there right now. Yeah, it's something that I don't personally like the look of either. It's not gonna be something that sits out in front of my shop with my name on it like that.
Do you ever come into situations where you have vehicles that are sitting for extended periods of time due to inability to get apart or that type of thing? Have you run into that?
From time to time, I do run into that, um, that, that same vehicle may be parked in a stall, you know, for a period of time for me to get apart, um, say two, three weeks sometimes, um, especially now with what's been going on. It's been getting better again, you know, but, um, at the same time, if it is parked there, it, the vehicle is maintained. If it does snow, it's gonna get brushed off. The windows are gonna get cleared off. It's shoveled around. It doesn't look like it's abandoned sitting there. It is gonna look like it is a piece of working equipment and, yeah, I'm not gonna, I do not let vehicles unregistered at my shop. I don't make them, prove me that they have insurance, but I'm assuming that everybody would, that brings it in, has insurance. I do have garage liability that covers me driving vehicles, you know, through me. If, once I get in them, then I am covered for that. So.
Okay.
I'm curious, um, what's gonna happen to all the vehicles that are there now? Whose responsibility is that? Where do they go?
Them are either Dale's vehicles that would have to be out of the property by June first, when I take possession. Or when I do take possession, I will call Colin Brothers and have them crushed. Just done, call it, good, they're yours. Get them out of here. I'm done.
Yeah.
They're, they're not, nothing is gonna, there's no. Dale has a lot of sympathy for people. He feels bad. I do too. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry on your, on your luck, but at the same time, I have to keep my business going. If you want to store your vehicle at your house till you have the funds to pay for it, that's great. If not, there's someone else that'll work on it. I'm sorry. I'm just.
They're, they're ultimately gonna be the responsibility of, everything that's there now will be the responsibility of the current owner to, to take care of.
The only thing that would leave would be, stay would be like the dumpster enclosure, which I will get rid of, of course. I would like to take the line of trees down between the two properties, just to clean that, sort of.
But you're not like taking over some of his projects, some of his jobs.
Taking none of his jobs or his projects over, no. He has a different line of work, a different clientele.
There's no reason then that any of those things should be.
There should be no reason that he should leave anything there. I'm, like I say, I'm not taking over any jobs of his. We all have this out far enough that he knows how long he has to have these jobs done and clear it out of there and what date he has. I mean, it's six months, so.
But you, it sounds like you've got pretty much a, like a purchase agreement.
We do. I have this to go through and a little banking yet and I wanna have, make sure all my ducks are in a row. We have a verbal agreement with each other, which, uh, me and his wife and, uh, we all sat down and talked and came to an agreement on what our purchase price was and a date and so, uh, it is fairly set.
Yeah, those are, those are good questions.
As long as everything goes.
I know that the council would have probably the same question if it didn't come up here.
So at your current location, how often do you work past six PM?
Never.
Never? So that's not, that's not a burden at all?
Never. I will, no, five o'clock, I am done. And I will, uh, if someone's there before seven, about seven thirty in the morning, nothing happens in my shop, to be honest with you, till about eight thirty. We're gonna sit and have coffee for an hour. It's just, that's how it is.
Cool.
Yep, and Fridays is three o'clock. No, we are done. I'm not, yeah, that's enough work for the week. Shut her down, go home, have a weekend. And we don't work Saturdays and Sundays. I mean, we may show up at the shop if we have to do something personally, you know, one Saturday for an hour or something, but there is no work going on. Might wash a truck or, you know what I mean?
The condition is, says hours of operation are limited to seven AM through six PM daily. You wouldn't be averse to making that Monday through Friday, for instance?
No, I mean, I was like I say, I, I, I don't work on the weekends. The only thing I would do is like, say, I may bring a vehicle down of my personal vehicle in the winter time to wash or to do my own personal something in the shop, but other than that, no, no work will be performed during the weekend. I.
Yeah. Yep.
John, I had a question on addition number five. These are vehicles in unoperated, operatable. Tranny's out, it's unoperatable. We should put some provision in there that he's gonna have vehicles unoperatable.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Cars on license, there's a lot of times people have a tranny problem. They put their vehicle in storage and they wanna get it fixed before they register it and start driving it. So they're, I think we should address that also.
Yeah, I usually don't like that. Personally, as a business owner, I then cannot drive that vehicle on the street legally without a risk of getting a ticket myself, because the ticket would come to the operator of the vehicle and I'm not gonna put myself or my guys into that situation. If they want the vehicle fixed, they're gonna be spending, say, three thousand dollars. They can go spend a hundred bucks and get the tabs before I do it.
I just.
No, I, I just, that's how, that's just my feeling. I, so I don't know if I necessarily need that out of there. Is this how I'd address the situation with the customer?
Operatable part, when they come in, their tranny's out, they're not operatable.
That, that part, you're right. I, I, there are some vehicles I do push by hand into the shop. They will not move.
That's a, that's a, that's a good point and my, I wasn't, that's what, not was, was my intent here. I apologize. When I go inoperable, what I'm, what I'm thinking of is.
Like something that's unfixable or?
Something that the, the front clip is gone.
B.
And the windshield is busted out.
Covers that.
Right, right. I, and I, that's not my line of work.
Yeah, we could, we could probably, we could probably remove inoperable and basically if it looks like it, I mean, it, it's kind of hard to define, but if it looks like it shouldn't be on the street, because I know.
Yeah, if it's not roadworthy.
My own vehicle, I, you know, a couple of years ago, I limped it into Schulte and it probably shouldn't have been on the road at that point, but they fixed it up and, you know, it's, it was probably borderline inoperable at that point.
But, uh, better, better terminology might be in place of inoperable, but non-roadworthy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that, I can, I can make that change. That, that'd be beneficial. And as far as the, as far as unlicensed vehicles, we're not going out of our way to look for that the tabs expired in November. You know, it, it's, it's, it's when there's either a whole bunch of them that are expired by a long period or when there, there are multiples that are expired for years. You know, that, that, that gives pretty good indication that they've been more or less abandoned and that someone's not paying attention to them. You know, we're, we're not trying to crack down because there's one or two that, that expired. I'm not, I'm not going with a magnifying glass every day and looking for trouble. You know, that's, there's vehicles on the road right now all over town that are long expired, but we use it as, you know, technically, uh, the, uh, unlicensed vehicle is junk and we look at it as more of a i- indicator for a bigger problem.
John, is there something for, uh, this particular zoning level that is objective on measuring decibels as far as having a more objective measurement, whether a particular property owner is making too much noise that's being, uh, being bad for the, for the neighbors?
Not necessarily. That's, that's why we, we limit the hours of operation typically. I'd assume in winter months, you're probably gonna be working and you're, you're welcome to speak, Mr. Schulte. Keeping the doors closed is probably gonna handle a lot of that, but the, the doors, the bay doors, the way they're set up when they're open, they face Third Street, uh, away from the residences and I've never had a noise complaint with the current user.
Okay.
At all. All sorts of other, you know, things with the property, but that's one we've never had is a noise complaint at all.
Yeah, and my noisiest piece of equipment is probably my air compressor and my air guns. Not extreme, you know, I mean, you're definitely, but you can have a conversation like this, standing in the overhead doors pretty much while the guys are running. The air compressor can run, you know, any, at any time in the shop and it's not heard. You know, it's behind a couple of, and I'll do the same thing at Poganski location is sort of double room that air compressor, so a guy can have a conversation while it runs and the guys can still work and it's not like this thing humming next to you, you know, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, if there's anybody else want to speak.
Who doesn't thank him? And anybody else who'd like to speak for or against?
I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm all for it. I'm a returning customer for Schultes and they've always treated me good. Their yard's always clean. I always get to, my car's in and out of there all the time. Plenty of time.
Okay. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Uh, I'll move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Public hearing closed at six fifty-five.
Do you want to go through the findings or, uh, write to a motion? I will make a motion then that we recommend approval of this, uh, conditional use permit application with a, uh, with the eight conditions.
I'll second that.
I, I'll finesse condition number five a little bit with regards to inoperable. I, I think I can improve on that a little bit before it goes to council. That's a, that was a good point to, to bring up.
We got a motion of the second to approve with conditions. All in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Passed with all present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
And, uh, uh, this will go to the coun, the city council on this coming Monday. Six, six thirty PM in this room.
Okay.
So we'll turn it around right, right then for you.
Okay.
Okay, item number five. Way Park Plant Commission will hold a public meeting at City Hall nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, six thirty or soon thereafter on Tuesday, December twenty seventh, to hear the following request. Request of Marketplace LLC and Banfield Pet House both for conditional use permit to operate an animal hospital in a B two commercial general business district. The property is legally described as block one, Park Square, Platte Four, City of Way Park, Sterns County, Minnesota, one ten, Second Street South. Public hearing opened at six fifty-seven.
Guys, I don't mean to interrupt, but if, if you, if you wanna chat, that's fine. Would you mind taking it, uh, just outside? No, we, we just, we've got someone on the, on the Zoom here, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You, you're welcome to stick around, but just if you, if you wanna chat, just, just outside, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call you John on my neighbor. That's recurring for years. He's still, he's bringing up a junkyard in his home. Have a good night, guys.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this, this request, uh, again, was submitted by Marketplace LLC and Banfield Pet Hospital. And it is for, uh, can, uh, request for animal hospital business in a B two commercial general business district. This, on the screen in front of you here, uh, is, I'm sorry, I'm sharing, I'm not sharing the right screen. I apologize. There we go. Uh, this is at Marketplace, uh, one ten, Second Street South. Uh, Banfield Pet Hospital currently has a location, uh, just nearby at the, the Pet Smart, although it's unclear if that location would remain if this goes forward. Uh, the Pet Smart location is within a different zoning classification. There's details enclosed regarding the proposal, including the, uh, the floor plan and typical Banfield Animal Hospital business operation details. It's a, a hospital, animal hospital, animal veterinary clinic, uh, chain business. I would note, we have several other pet hospitals in town, uh, operating, uh, throughout the city, some of which are located in the same zoning classification, but do not have a conditional use permit associated with them because their, their grandfather, they're older than the current ordinance. Uh, we've never had an issue with any of those, uh, two or three year, we have. So we, there's no, I don't have any cause for concern with this particular request either. I've not had any issues with the, the current Banfield location within, uh, Pet Smart, just, just down the road. This proposal is located entirely within the building. It's not, not a boarding facility, although they do have some, facilities, some facilities for, um, after, after, uh, procedure care where animals may need to stay over. Uh, procedure care where animals may need to stay overnight or for a night or two, but it's not intended that it's a boarding facility that, um. Puts up dogs or cats for extended time just to care for them while the owner's away, it's a, a, a clinic. Uh, the proposed, uh, business information submitted by applicant, um, demonstrates that the pro, proposed use would. Fit well within the, uh, the tenant space there. I'll zoom out a little bit, it's a fairly sizable, uh, facility. Forgive me as I zoom in a little bit here. So we got a number of, uh, you know, front counter area tenant or excuse me, um, um. Treatment procedure rooms, um, the recovery area and then, uh, some of the, the facilities, uh, kind of throughout for the, the canine and. Uh, uh, cat, I assume surgery, X-ray suite. Uh, pharmacy for the, uh, dispensal of, uh, prescriptions or medications. Uh, some area for the, uh, staff break room, uh, exam rooms for, for just general checkup sort of stuff. And then, uh, the front lobby area where, where customers would, uh, come in with the, with the animals and kinda go from there, very. Very typical, uh, vet clinics sort of layout for, for those of you that, um, utilize those, those facilities for your purposes. Um, no aspects of the proposal that would involve the exterior, uh, otherwise be located outside. Um, everything in here is typical of the, of an animal vet clinic that, that we have in the city. Um, uh, typically the only, the only conditions we would prob, typically look at is to ensure that animals don't disrupt neighboring properties. Uh, but there's really not a heck of a lot with this that, that could do that, there's no residents nearby that they could impact, uh, as far as noise or anything. Uh, so my, my recommendations for, uh, uh, conditions are, are pretty streamlined in this case, there's just not a heck of a lot to. To really try to put on conditions to make it work with neighboring properties, it seems to work pretty well on its own. Uh, so my, my recommendation would be for approval of the conditional use permit with the, uh, three following conditions. Uh, number one, applicant shall apply for and obtain all necessary permits prior to construction. Number two, exterior signage requires separate permit review and approval. Uh, prior to fabrication and installation of signage, and three, uh, no animal or kennel run shall be located outside without. Uh, separate city, uh, review and approval. And I, I would add that we, we, uh, don't have anyone present in the council chambers, but we do have representative of the. Uh, of the request on the, uh, Zoom line here, so if there's any questions for him, his name is Andy Sungard. Uh, he, he can certainly speak on behalf of any questions come up if he, if he, uh, needs to. I, I'll, I may try to have to, have to try to relay a little bit if the Zoom doesn't work, but, uh.
Is there any requirement or limitation within our, uh. Ordinances as far as the number of animals that can be kept overnight, for instance, at a facility like this, is there any?
Nothing, nothing in ordinance, there's nothing that specifically speaks to, uh, animal clinics as far as, uh. How many can be kept, we have separate, we have something separate for, uh, animal boarding facilities that are in different districts, but that's, that's a different operation. That's not, that's not medical care, that's something where, uh, typically a larger facility where there's, you know, ex, extended stay animal hotel, basically. Uh, there can be caps on, uh, you know, a number of animals through that, but, um. I'm honestly not sure if there's a, a building code or, or maybe a, something specific to veterinary care that, that may limit that, but nothing from the city's perspective.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, John, I'm curious, uh, we are trying to. Figure out how, how this is situated in this building, where, where is it, can you help us nail that down a little better? Uh, cuz all we've got is a picture of the whole building.
Yep, and that, that's, the reason for that is the, the notification requirements, uh, because we, when we notice, we go by the, the entirety of the property, so it doesn't matter if you're. Um, within the, you know, anywhere in one of the suites, if you're on the property, you get it. Um, maybe Mr. Sungard can, can fill me in a little bit on kind of where that. In, where within the property, the, the actual tenant space is located.
John, um, in the packet is a little bit of an apple property. Um, I don't know if you can hear me, but, uh, it would be what I would say the far north. Uh, west corner of the building, they'll be on the end of the building where, if you're familiar with the property, uh, where Once Upon a Child is.
Yep.
Now, they have moved and they will take, um, part of the old Once Upon a Ch- Child space, again, northwest. Piece of the property, cuz it's an L-shaped building.
Yep, I've, I've got it on my cursor here, um, I think, this, my apologies, the thing.
Is there not a Centra Care clinic near there too?
Is, the question was, there's a Centra Care clinic there too, or something nearby?
Yeah, they would be, uh, north of Centra Care, next to Centra Care, from the closer to, you know, the Starbucks.
Okay, I, I think that puts, puts us in the, the vicinity there, I think, those couple of things put us in right where we know.
Thank you.
Andy, did you have a, uh, I, I'm sure it was in the plans, but I didn't reference the, if there's a total square footage of how much space are taken, did you have that offhand?
Uh, I do, it's, uh, fifty-five hundred square feet.
Fifty-five hundred square feet.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Got a motion, second, close public hearing, all in favor, single saying aye.
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 Public hearing closed at seven oh six.
Mister Chairman, considering the fact that we, we have a history of this faci, uh, these people working within the city. And it seems to be a, uh, likable situation for where they wanna move. I don't see objections to it, we have no one here in objection to it. I guess I would, uh, move for approval of the conditional use permit for their move, uh, with the conditions that have been stated.
Mister Chair, I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second to approve with the conditions, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, passed with all present.
Did you, did you catch that, Andy? Andy, we, we will have this on the agenda for, uh, the city council meeting on Monday. Uh, this coming Monday, uh, I believe it's the third, uh, six thirty P M. There's not a public hearing associated with that at City Hall, you're, you're welcome to attend if you'd like. There will be a Zoom setup for that as well, but there's no public hearing, uh, typically there's no public comment on, on those, but. Um, you're welcome to sit in on the Zoom or attend in person if you'd like, or anyone else on behalf of the request, we'll get you that link when it's ready.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Monday's the second.
Uh, Monday the second, my apologies. Oh, wait, no, no, Tuesday, Tuesday, it's actually, Tuesday the third will be the, I forgot the, the New Year's. New Year's holiday, Tuesday the third, it's a, it's an odd one for us. Sorry about that, thank you for pointing that out. Thank you, have a good night. Uh, I, I don't have any new business, I will just, I'll just give a couple of quick updates. Um, uh, number one, Sean will be leaving us, uh, heading to city council, so thank you for all your work on planning commission. Glad I get to continue working with you.
Been a pleasure, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sean.
Uh.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
A short pleasure.
Yeah. Uh, and, uh, a, as Sean moves into city council, uh, Vic Schultz is actually stepping back from city council and coming onto planning commission where he was for, for a number of years before my time, so. Um, he wanted to, uh, take a step back and, uh, have someone that was, you know, a little more, uh. Flexible with his schedule, maybe a little less of a time commitment and looking forward to having him involved too. So I thi, I think that works out and, um, we, we still will be open for a fifth member, if you can cajole or twist them arms or put the word out, we're. I'm trying to do that too, um, always better to have five.
I know somebody who's interested, but he's a relative of mine, so I don't think, I think it would be a conflict, so.
Uh, I don't necessarily know that it is.
You don't think so?
I don't think so. Yeah. Yeah, it, it only gets to be a, a conflict of interest if you, if it's ever anything that, that pertains to your property or, you know, yours or, or theirs and.
No, my son, my son is living with us and he's building a house out there.
Then, then all I have to do is step back and say, oh, I gotta recuse myself, you, you know how that goes, that's not a big deal. For the vast majority, I have no, no issue. Uh, as far as the, uh, just a quick update on the, the mining ordinance, uh, work, we're, we're continuing to work through that. Um, we, I had some discussion with the city council last Monday at work session, they suggested a couple more revisions. We've been working with Johnson Materials, uh, over the past couple of months and found some common ground with them. Um, kinda have the bulk of a draft together, uh, we were planning a meeting with the county, uh, to discuss some aspects, um. With regards to Quarry Park and some of their, um, uh. Aspects of things, uh, last week, but it, it fell through due to weather, so we, we rescheduled that for next week and. Uh, I, I don't know, I don't think we'll probably be having a, the, the regular first planning commission meeting of the month, that would typically be, uh, but. Uh, we'll try to find a, a time later in the month that, that we may need to look at scheduling a, a special meeting, Chris, I know you're, you're traveling. Um, hopefully we may have enough to, to go without you, otherwise we could look at doing a, a, a Zoom participation, that is an option if, if you have time. But, um, we'll, I'll keep you in the loop as that progresses, I just wanna let you know where we've been working through that on, on, uh, kinda behind the scenes and, um, think we're making good progress, so. Um, you know, we still have to, uh, towards the end of February to get that buttoned up. Uh, but I, I think we've got some good common ground, we've, we've settled on with everybody. We, we still, we're still planning on holding, um, maybe that, that open meeting before we take it to planning commission in the next couple of weeks. Once we settle on, um, you know, some, uh, kinda major components and then, um, you know, invite the planning commission, invite the city council and. Uh, send out a notice to people that we know are kind of in that general area of the impacted properties and, and do a notice in the paper, it's. Not quite a formal public hearing, but kind of just an open discussion, so, I'm still looking at holding that in the coming weeks, but, uh, we got pushed into the new year after everything.
It seemed like that's kinda what everybody wanted, they felt it was too, you know. They didn't have enough input, so I think that would be a good thing for, to satisfy the requests.
Yep. So we're, we're getting there, I just wanted to keep you in the loop on that.
You, d, maybe it's premature to say, but are you, are you looking more at what? What is already in the works? Or are you looking for the future, what could come into the works?
We're, we're looking ma, primarily, uh, at, at known quantities right now, areas we know that there would be potential interest. Um, and then, you know, factoring in if there's. Factoring in if there's some that we, we might, might not be able to account for now. For the most part, the folks know where most of the granite reserves are that there would be serious interest in. What we don't know is necessarily, you know, something like the, like the sand, the sand pit, um, gravel pit, you know, those are gonna be more. A, along a river or something like that, so we don't necessarily know, you know, where that interest would, would be, so we. You know, we have to leave it a little bit open and in for that, but, um. We'll look forward to kinda rolling out a draft here probably before that, that meeting in the couple, couple of weeks, I think things will start to move pretty quickly here. Um, I've been working, you know, the time has gone quickly since the, the council extended that moratorium for that extra couple of months, but. I've been using it behind the, um, you know, working quietly with S E H, they have staff that, um, specializes in. You know, technical side of the mining quarrying, um, looking at some other ordinances, working with Johnson Materials and some of those folks. Um, some back and forth and, you know, not every, you know, there's, there's give and take on everything, but I think, you know, we have something that most people will, I, I think, you know. The bones of, we have the bones of something I think most people will probably be able to live with and. Um, you know, set us up for, um, you know, some use of material, but also set up the city for some, you know, long-term development options as those wrap up over time. So that's all, that's all I had for tonight.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's adjourned at seven fourteen.
Thank you.
Good New Years.